Jesus Father, we love you, we thank you, we pause just for a moment. We're still, we know that you are God and we are not. We thank you for your blessings, we thank you for St. Petersburg College, its faculty, its staff, its administration. We thank you for the Midtown campus built with passion, built in light of the need for this community, and we know that it is need and that need. Thank you for all the people that are here today, guided, protecting people. Be with us, this board, Father, give us discernment, give us guidance, give us wisdom as we seek to better this community, as we seek to further education, as we seek to change lives. Use this Father according to your will. Pray these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. You can see on the agenda that we do have a few retirement resolutions today. However, no one could attend with us, but if you get a chance to reach out to any of those three, please tell them thank you for their service and congratulations on retirement. We're going to move to the announcements and I'll invite up Mr. Strickland.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Dr. Williams, thanks for having us this morning. Before I get started in talking about this unique partnership, I want to recognize some special guests that we have here with us this morning. We've got Molly James from the Community Foundation of Tampa Bay. We also have Ms. Wilma Norton, who's also from the Community Foundation of Tampa Bay. We also have with us Tim Shuler, who represents the interest of Dr. Lori. And then we also have this guy that you might recognize who ran the Seminole campus for a number of years, Dr. Jim Oliver. Thanks for coming this morning. I will get to our special guest, though, here in a moment. I want to give you a little bit of background of why we're here and why I'm coming forward to ask your opinion and approval. Dr. Lori and his wife are donating $500,000 to the St. Petersburg College Seminole Campus. With this money, the college will construct approximately 2,800 square foot modular building for the chamber at no cost to the college. In turn, the college will lease this building to the Seminole Chamber of Commerce. This agreement will cover basic utility expenses along with maintenance for the building, again, at no cost to the college. We have constructed a 15-year contract to allow for two escalators to be built into this agreement as well, so it's a fair deal between the college and the chamber. The college will also use a third of this space for teaching college business courses. In addition to that, our students will have access to the 300-plus chamber members for job shadowing, internships, and jobs. But not only that, we were also including civic groups like Kiwanis and Rotary, that will have access to the building as well, so they can conduct their meetings and provide access to civic organizations to our students. I believe this is an example that Dr. Williams has talked about many times in reference to creating a community of care through partnerships. So none of this would be possible without the generous donation of Dr. Lori and his wife Vivian, and I'd like to give Dr. Lori an opportunity to say a few words. Dr. Lori, come on up.
Thank you.
Years ago, Vivian and I established the donor advised fund with the Community Foundation of Tampa Bay, and Molly James here is the representative from the Community Foundation. And it's through this establishment of this donor advised fund that we were able to accumulate the monies that are being offered to the college. And Tim Shuler, my attorney, did all the work on this thing, and it's been a long haul, and we appreciate the fact that the college wishes to work with the Chamber of Commerce and the other service clubs in Seminole to create this building for the use of the community. And years ago, Jim Oliver and I were able to establish the entrepreneurial program at the college, and this will just add to that type of use. And I'm thankful that this thing is finally getting off the ground, and we really look forward to the establishment of this building.
Absolutely.
Happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions from the board or comments?
I'm writing, reviewing the lease.
Dr. Lori, we appreciate the patience that you've shown in getting this done and the vision to make a commitment like this at the Seminole campus for St. Petersburg College. I'm excited for the next steps, to see this come to fruition. And what I'd like to do is, while you're still here, we had later in the agenda the actual vote to approve the agreement and lease for this partnership. I'd like to move that up so that we can take action on that now. So if I could, I'd like to open it up to the board for any questions on that lease I would just ask, as I read through it, the lease does reference Exhibits A, B, C as further details. I didn't see them in my packet. If I could just get those later after this meeting. Other than that, I don't have any specific questions about the agreement itself.
No, that was my only question as well, was I was curious how large the building was relative to the area that was going to be occupied.
It's 2,800 square feet.
Okay.
I have a quick question. The operational charges that'll be paid, does that cover 100% of the cost of maintenance, insurance?
There's a fixed rate, that's a statewide formula that we use to come up with the cost, square footage cost, and this is within that ballpark. And then the escalator's built in the contract over the next 15 years, after year five and after year 10, we'll actually see this square footage rate go up to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the maintenance.
It's a fixed rate. Is there any clause in there to adjust the fixed escalator in the event those costs go up?
No, sir.
Should we?
I think for a club, excuse me, for the chamber and its nonprofit organization and how this is a benefit to our students, that we are actually benefiting greatly from this partnership in teaching classes, college business. So we're basically using a third of the building at our own expense.
You answered. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Who gets the half million dollar check?
Any other, any other questions or comments from the board?
Nathan's going to jump up.
I want it. With that, do I have a motion?
I move approval and thank you so much, Dr. Lori, and to the Community Foundation for your support of the Lori Fund and bringing this to fruition, so moved.
Second.
I have a first, I have a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved.
Can we get a picture?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Brayden in the center.
We all want to be in the picture.
Yeah, for half a million dollars.
For half a million dollars. See everybody? And Dr. Oliver still?
One, two, three, four, one, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
Did you get stuck in traffic? Traffic stop?
Well, you must know, yeah, I have six fifteen minutes. My staff needs it, so.
Ouch.
In your back.
Okay. With that, we will move on. Dr. Renard, thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board and Dr. Williams. It gives me great pleasure to introduce Mr. Rod Davis. Rod is our new provost at the Tarpon Springs campus. Rod has been an employee of the college since 2004, where he began his career here as an academic advisor and has moved into increasing responsibility, roles with increasing responsibilities. Most recently, he was the associate provost of that campus since 2012, so please welcome Rod Davis.
Thank you. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity, and I'm looking forward to serving our staff, our faculty, and our students and the Tarpon Springs community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We'll move to the comments. Part of our board meeting here, and I'll start with just a few brief comments. First and foremost, it's a privilege and an honor to be here at our Midtown campus. I'm a bit biased because I do live in St. Petersburg, so for me, this is just a true gem for our city, and I want to spend just a second thanking again everyone who had anything to do with putting this together, including city leadership at the time and the leadership here with the board, the administrators. And it goes far and wide, those that had something to do with putting this campus in the heart of the Deuces, our historic 22nd Street South, thoroughfare, and Business Center. And so it's an honor to be here, and I'm happy to be here. Other than that, it's been a relatively quiet month, other than what's been going on up in Tallahassee.
Just be for yourself.
But I did have a chance to attend two basketball games, which was a lot of fun and allowed me not to think about work or leadership of St. Petersburg College. And this one over here is pretty loud at basketball games. I don't know if you all have ever witnessed that, but maybe sit a little further away. And then I had a great opportunity that same week to just sit in very briefly with the leadership St. Pete College class. So proud of that group and what they're doing, what they're learning, and their passion and commitment for this college and its future, and it was great to see. And with that, I'll open it up. Any other comments from board members?
I just wanted to update you all. I'm the board's designee to the St. Pete College Foundation Board, and last month, or over the holidays, I guess, last month, Dr. Williams and I met with the board chair, Ms. Beth Horner, and to really talk about how the foundation and this board and our strategic planning process and how those two organizations can align even better than they do now. And so we're actively working with the foundation board and really hopeful to see some great new opportunities and programs coming out of the foundation as well, so just want to update you all on that.
Real quick, thank you for pointing out the Midtown campus. I was blessed to be mayor at the time we approached Dr. Lori and said, "We've got some dirt if you'll erect the building," and really dedicated to the needs of the community. And it far has exceeded my expectation, but it's a perfect location, thanks to Johnny Ruth Clark and the Mercy Hospital, and I consider this kind of holy ground. And the college has been a great steward of this land and a great steward in this community. So, yeah, I'm a little partial to this one. This one is my favorite campus, but it was just a huge need, there still is, and the college is really up to that challenge, so thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I guess I'll finish off with this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to call him mayor, because this campus would not have been built without you and your administrations. And I don't want to get in trouble, but I would say, there's a lot of talk about what people have done or are going to do what they're supposed to do in this community. But Bill Foster, his administration stepped up when we came up with the money to build this campus, and if you notice, there's been nothing built in Midtown except for this campus since. So we are a beacon, we are the leader, and we got to step up and make sure that we provide for this community in the way that we know that we can. And I will say that we've done an excellent job thus far, but we still have a lot of work to do, and there's a lot more things that we can do, and I hope that we will do. But this place is a jewel in this community, and provides an opportunity for, the way I see it, people, young people, who don't have hope that they're going to college to actually touch a field and see a college campus right in their backyard. People who live across the street who never thought that they'd have an opportunity to take one college course can finish their AA right here. So, and then there's folks that just want to have refresher courses, elderly folks within the community that want to come and use computers. And you don't know what that next step is for somebody else once they're introduced to something, and I think this is a good introduction for this community to have, to a college campus. So I think a job well done to everybody in terms of this campus. I hope that the folks that have not seen all of it will take the time to take a tour. And I'm especially proud that the name that is on this building is my uncle's, and he was a great Floridian and a great person for this community, who believed in right where you are right now, this community. So as far as that goes, I think that we've done an excellent job here. Midtown staff has done a phenomenal job, but like I said, we've got a long way to go. Tallahassee, I'll give you, I had an opportunity to meet with Mr. Miles and Ed Woodruff and some other folks, Deborah Boyle, who were all in Tallahassee with leadership. St. Pete College, had an opportunity to speak to the group, a great and excellent group as usual. You know, the thing I like about that particular group, and it comes from all walks of life in the college, it allows everybody to see all of the inner workings of the college. And, you know, sometimes we get caught up in, and it happens to me, just like it happens to everybody else, you see your particular piece of the organization, think it's undervalued, and you're not getting what you're supposed to have. This allows for you to see all of the inner workings of how you have to feed everybody at the college, and you also have to make sure that everybody has the amount, same amount of resources to be effective in doing their job. So it's an excellent program and a group. I think we're thankful that I took the time to talk to them, and I was, quite frankly, I enjoy it. I think that they get a different perspective on what really happens in college and how we, the sausage is made in Tallahassee. And speaking of sausage, we are in an excellent position. We're going in the conference in next week. We're in the House budget, and the governor's office has assured us that will be, that they will take our budget to conference and argue for it as well. The Senate has us way down, but I think that in, and just like in most sessions, is, a lot of people can tell you, just being in the House budget gives you great positioning. And usually, when the bargaining is going back and forth, we usually come out on top. And I would tell you that we're in the best position that we can be in because the Senate president is no friend of community colleges. He's my friend, but I tell him every time I see him, he's no friend of community colleges. What he's done over the last two years is tried to dismantle community colleges. Thank God for the CRC, the Constitution Revision Committee, which is trying to actually put a college board that would, cannot be removed in the Florida Constitution, so that we don't have to go back and forth every 20 years on where we stand in terms of education. But as terms of the budget and our money for the Gibbs campus completion, I think we're in a good, in good shape. And that's just kind of my report, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbons. We appreciate your words, of course, in regards to this campus. Anything from the president this morning?
Yes. First, I want to reiterate what everyone has said about leadership at SPC. The trip to Tallahassee was golden. I think that there was a lot that everyone learned, but also got a chance to meet each other and spend time with each other and meet folks from different disciplines and areas. I thought that was great. We had an OCR audit a couple of weeks back. We have not received all of the outcomes of it, but overall, we were told we did a great job, and we'll be bringing you a thorough report back on once we get that. We also had a VA reform initiative that Dr. Frondroth and a few others put together with Public Policy, where we had Deputy Secretary of the Department of Veteran Affairs, Thomas G. Bowman, as the speaker. And I had a chance to stay, to hear him speak, and there was a lot that he shared that we could implement at the college and share with our veterans here at SPC, and so I'm looking forward to us doing that. And on Wednesday and Thursday, our student group will be going to Tallahassee, and I'll be meeting them up there on Wednesday and Thursday, and on Thursday, I'll be meeting with the governor. That's my report.
Thank you. I do not see or have any public comments on my desk. If there are none, we will move on to the review and approval of last month's minutes. Do we have any discussion, or do I have a motion to approve the minutes from January?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? So moved. We'll move to monthly reports. Anything from our board attorney today?
Mr. Chairman, I'm proud to tell you that I'm three weeks into semi-retirement.
Thank you, Ms. Willing.
And I'm acting as oath counsel for the firm, and will continue to do that for some time to come.
Excellent. Thank you. Congrats.
Thank you.
And anything from Ms. Gardner this morning?
Good morning. I don't have any report today.
Thank you. Okay, that moves us to Dr. Ulrich, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Williams. First of all, I don't really know how I'm going to follow that $500,000 check, but I'm going to try. I'm Dr. Shannon Ulrich. I'm the president of the Faculty Governance Organization, and I'm here today to provide some updates regarding the work of FGO over the past several months. Last October, I introduced you to the 2017-2018 FGO Leadership Team, and I shared a task list that included, one, getting caught up from Irma, which we somehow managed to do, thankfully. Second on that list was establishing and populating the FGO SharePoint Site. Third was coordinating campus visits with Dr. Williams' office. And then we wanted to determine some goals for this year. One of the major goals I've set for FGO is to strengthen communication, and I hope you will see that threaded throughout this morning's updates. We're going to start this morning by introducing and meeting the new FGO Chair of St. Pete Gibbs in picture form, and then I'll share with you the progress we've made in tackling my task list that I shared with you last time, and also I'll share with you how we've tackled that goal of strengthening communication. So first, we'll start off with our newest FGO chairperson. At the end of last semester, Albert Farr, our previous St. Pete Gibbs FGO chairperson, left the college. He's been replaced by the vice chair, Carol Wyedman. She is a full-time faculty member in the Mathematics Department and has been active in the FGO Senate for several years, and we are very pleased to have her on the FGO Leadership Team. Now on to the updates. If you notice on this slide, I've actually titled it "Success" instead of "Updates," and I did this on purpose, because I wanted to highlight achievements that have been made because of the transparency and communication we have been cultivating the past few months. There have been more successes than those that are listed here on this slide, but due to time constraints, Deborah tells me you've got to keep it short, I used only these two examples. I specifically chose these examples because they represent what I am calling a major success and also a minor success. You could also refer to them as a large-scale and a small-scale success. Regardless of the size, both originated from the same place, a conversation between faculty, and get this, administration. This semester, a modified drop-add date policy went into effect. The origin of this policy started when Dr. Cooper and Coraggio visited FGO Senate. They suggested we consider a modified drop-add date. A proposal was generated, sent to the campuses, passed at the campuses, passed in the Senate, and a new policy went into effect this spring. And from my understanding, it helped improve enrollment over the first week of classes. The minor success that is listed, which reads "Bookstore in the Directory," came from a faculty question out of the Seminole campus. It was asked if the bookstore contact information could be added to the SPC directory with the rationale that faculty and staff and students could more easily contact our on-campus bookstores. Sunita Kumari, the Seminole FGO chairperson, followed up with Dr. Williams at an FGO Executive Team meeting, and two days later, I received an email from Deborah Boyle with a screenshot sharing the addition of the bookstore to the SPC directory. And I want to emphasize that "two days later," quick. So these are clear illustrations of the accomplishments we are able to, or we are capable of, given increased communication. Okay, let's move on to some actual updates. Starting with the Experience formerly known as Classroom, we have renamed the Classroom Experience the Learning Experience. This change is more inclusive of all modalities offered at SPC, and it also allows us to examine the student and faculty component of the learning process. In November, we held our first meeting, and we talked about expectations of students and faculty, and we defined our value proposition, which states, "The Learning Experience encompasses a collaborative and supportive environment where clear expectations for students and faculty are communicated, mutual ownership of the learning process is cultivated, and purposeful reflection and commitment to scholarship is fostered with academic excellence" as our ultimate goal. Since that meeting, myself, Joe Leopold, and Heather Roberson have collected data on engagement and mapped where the Learning Experience fits into the success of an SPC student. The fruits of our labor are pictured here. A little messy, but you get the general idea. Last Friday, the faculty, excuse me, the faculty and deans of the Learning Experience Committee met for the second time, and we discussed data, talked about practices to engage our students, and we had a dialogue regarding the roles and responsibilities of students and faculty in the learning process. In that discussion, we outlined a few goals and identified some strategies to implement our objectives. Our next steps are to collect input from a wider faculty audience in faculty listening posts, and we also would like to solicit input from students with student focus groups. I plan to share updates on the Learning Experience as well as other pertinent faculty-related information on the FGO SharePoint Site. I was finally able to schedule SharePoint training and now have a very, very basic working knowledge of SharePoint design. I have begun updating and uploading information to that site, and if you are interested, I've included the link on the slide so you can go and observe my website design. And keep in mind, I'm a microbiologist when you're looking at it. The next update I'm presenting is the Academic Integrity Policy or Procedure. This policy defines plagiarism and cheating and outlines a process for addressing offending students. The draft of the policy should be completed this week by a group of small, a small group of faculty, and then it will go to faculty senate and deans, and then out to the campus FGOs. I just wanted to put this on your radar, and we'll have more information about this the next time we come together, the next time I come here and see you all. Last on this slide is the Mental Health Awareness Oversight Group. At Fall Faculty, Carlia East asked a question regarding mental health resources for our students, which is a concern for a lot of faculty. Just to give you guys an example, I received an email to e poi andrà al Senato di facoltà e dean, e poi all'FGO del campus. Voglio mettere questo su tuo radar e avremo più informazioni su questo la prossima volta che ci incontriamo. La prossima volta che arrivo qui e vedo voi tutti. Ultimo sulla slide è il gruppo di osservazione della salute mentale. Al campus facoltà, Carlia East ha un questione riguardo alle risorse mentali per i nostri studenti, che è un preoccupante per molti facoltà. Solo per darvi un esempio, ho ricevuto un'email due giorni fa da un studente che professava che era severamente depresso e aveva perso una settimana di classe con me. Quindi, è sicuramente qualcosa che è nella nostra mente e che siamo davvero preoccupati. La domanda di Carlia al campus facoltà era basically il genetico del gruppo che ho listsiato qui. E tecnicamente, questo dovrebbe essere un aggiunto venuto da Heather in Sedal perché lei coordina il gruppo. Ma sono stata a un paio di riunioni e sono molto contenta del lavoro che è stato fatto, quindi volevo condividere con voi un po' di cose riguardanti e cosa sta succedendo. Il gruppo consiste di facoltà, dean e provost. Il team ha lavorato con Jennifer McBride e il Dipartimento di Grant per produrre una proposta che sta venendo sottoposta questa settimana. E l'idea dietro la proposta è di further identificare quelle risorse per i studenti e di cercare di trovare un coordinatore al campus che potrà aiutare i facoltà, studenti e staff a visualizzare quei servizi un po' più chiaramente. Quindi, speriamo di portarvi buone notizie riguardo a quella proposta in futuro. Anniato anche che il Senato di FGO è impegnato a aprire linee di comunicazione. Come abbiamo già detto, abbiamo ospitato i dott. Cooper e Coraggio all'insieme al Senato di FGO. In aggiunta, Jeanette Hunt e Brian Miles sono stati fermi per condividere un'overview del budget. Francesa New è venuta a parlare della fondazione. Ramona Kirch ha parlato di studenti internazionali con noi. Harrison e Rita sono venute e hanno ricevuto molte applausi quando hanno discusso i dettagli della fusione del sito da due a uno. E l'anno prossimo ci aspetteremo il dott. Pat Renaud. Non solo i facoltà collegandosi con l'amministrazione al Senato, i facoltà stanno anche ottenendo l'opportunità di parlare con il dott. Williams durante i potlucks con il Presidente durante le visite al campus. Secondo i feedback che ho sentito e visto io stesso dopo aver partecipato ad uno dei potlucks, questo è stato un'esperienza estremamente positiva, con i facoltà commentando che non solo sentono che sono stati ascoltati, ma sentono che sono stati sentiti. Quindi, speriamo che queste visite al campus diventino una tradizione annuale. E il mio ultimo aggiunto non è proprio un aggiunto, è in realtà un invito formale al titolo di 5K Titan Trot di Clearwater Campus, il 14 aprile alle 8:00. Questo evento è organizzato da Rachel Bennett, Linay Bamy, Melanie Paden e io e stiamo attualmente raccogliendo soldi sponsorizzatori per coprire il costo della gara. Un grande ringraziamento a Green Bench Brewing Company e il dott. Williams per essere sul lista di sponsor. Tutti i processi dalla gara andranno verso i fondi di laurea di SPC. Quindi, a parte il comitato di organizzazione, vi invito a venire, camminare, o se vi sentite come me, camminare, camminare, correre, o cheer, o semplicemente celebrare la famiglia di SPC quel giorno. L'ultima volta, ho concluso con highlight di facoltà che si concentravano sulla collaborazione e la comunità. Oggi, andrò con quella tematica della comunicazione. E volevo condividere un evento informale che sta venendo ospitato dal presidente del campus FGO di Clearwater, Melanie Paden. Ha riconosciuto che i facoltà non hanno molto tempo per semplicemente calmarsi e parlare. Quindi, ha iniziato ciò che si chiama "calm time". Quindi, ha reservato una stanza su un giorno fuori dal tempo di riunione di FGO e ha invitato i facoltà a venire, e io cito, "calm". Tiene che dire "nessi studenti, nessuna agenda, 100 pure de chill". La prima riunione ha ricevuto un grande riscontro. Aveva circa 14 facoltà che hanno partecipato. E se conosce Melanie, è molto interessata a bridgiare il vuoto tra facoltà e consigli. Quindi, all'ultima "calm time", ha invitato i consigli. E all'ultima "calm time", ha invitato tutti i campus Clearwater, inclusa il nostro provost, il dott. Vito, e è stato in grado di partecipare. Perdendo, non ho avuto l'opportunità di partecipare perché sono in laboratorio giocando con le batterie. Ma un giorno o due, andrò lì. Quindi, se qualcuno vi interessa in unione al calmo time facoltà, conosco qualcuno e posso probabilmente farvi venire sul lista, semplice. E questo è tutto da me. Quindi, lo passo a voi per nessun domanda o commenti.
Qualcuno di commenti o domande dal board? Dott. Ulrich, grazie, e sarò in corso nel 5K. Sono stato allenato molto bene, quindi, se qualcuno vuole mettere un sfogo, sono sempre pronto per un sfogo. Quindi, vediamo cosa possiamo fare. Debra, se sei pronto, facciamo.
E avremo premi, avremo premi, non solo medali di finirlo, ma avremo anche premi.
Le persone possono camminare, possono camminare, vero?
Sì.
Sì.
Non sfogarti, mi potrei strappare sul fianco.
Grazie molto. Ok, voglio invitare miss Trimble con l'aggiunto sul Career Service Employee Council.
Buongiorno, signor Presidente, membri del board, dott. Williams. Mi chiamo Jean Trimble, e sono la presidenta del Career Service Employee Council, che rappresenta più di 600 lavoratori di lavoro di lavoro. Come in altri settori di SPC, il CSSEC sta strategicamente pianificando la sua revitalizzazione. Un passo è attraverso l'involvemento della comunità, ispirato dal coraggio del dott. Tanja Williams al commitment alla community engagement e al Day of Service MLK. Con il vicepresidente Kimberly R. Williams, i membri sono stati sfornati di volontà o individualmente, durante il Day MLK, o per organizzare un progetto campus. Uno dei più successivi di questi sforzi campus era un corso di vestiti e apparecchiature piccole al campus di St. Pete Gibbs. Questi oggetti sono stati donati a HEP, che è il progetto di emergenza homeless, anche conosciuto come "aiutare le persone a aiutarsi stessi". Questo corso superò gli aspettative e le donazioni stanno ancora scadendo. Un grande ringraziamento va a Francine Fuentes e Russell Oriol, i rappresentanti del CSEC di St. Pete Gibbs, per il loro duro lavoro. HEP è estremamente grato e sarà presto tornato per recoprire un altro carico di macchine. Ora, sulla nostra aspirazione alla revitalizzazione, c'è una formazione di leadership target per tutti i membri del Comitato di steerings della CSEC. Questo accederà contemporaneamente alla formazione d'estate al campus Seminole, il 2 marzo. I argomenti includranno la ristituzione e la revitalizzazione della missione. Chi siamo e cosa facciamo? Branding CSSEC. I lavoratori di lavoro dovrebbero sapere chi siamo e cosa facciamo. Apprenderemo i passi per diventare un comitato strategico attraverso SWAT. Quali sono le nostre forze, deboli, opportunità e minacce? Praticeremo l'attivo ascolto. Finalmente, impareremo le nostre capacità nell'ingaggiare i lavoratori di lavoro di cui rappresentiamo. Il CSSEC è eccitato per queste opportunità e siamo impegnati a revitalizzare il CSSEC e aiutando i lavoratori di lavoro di lavoro attraverso la formazione, l'attivo ascolto e la comunicazione. Questo conclude la mia presentazione. Ci sono domande?
Grazie molto, miss Trimble. Allora, passeremo ad esperienza di successo dei studenti e all'addestra accademica. E con un aggiunto del programma di onore, abbiamo il signor Freitas. Grazie.
Buongiorno, signor Presidente, fidanzati, dott. Williams. Sono Earl Freitas, il direttore del programma di onore, e apprezzo il tempo di oggi per darvi un aggiunto su cosa stiamo facendo. Il programma di onore prende alcuni dei migliori e più brillanti di St. Petersburg College e assicura che siano pronti a trasferirsi ad uno dei nostri diplomi baccalaurati o ad un altro college o università. Cultiviamo i leader del giorno. È a volte controintuitivo, ma molti dei studenti del programma di onore sono in realtà studenti di alto richiamo perché vengono da famiglie dove sono i primi studenti a andare a college in casa. A volte sono così accademici, ma la loro famiglia non ha i mezzi finanziari per aiutare questo studente a proporgersi. Quindi, il programma di onore prepara questi studenti a fare il massimo delle loro opportunità qui a St. Petersburg College. Le demografie del programma di onore seguono il college come un的整体 con alcune eccezioni. Abbiamo l'abilità, anche attraverso l'intelligenza commerciale, di arrivare individualmente a tutti i studenti di onore e aiutare a assicurare che stiamo reclamando e servendo tutte le popolazioni del college. Come potete vedere, anche molti dei nostri studenti hanno un GPA molto alto una volta che si laureano e lasciano per andare avanti al prossimo livello della loro carriera accademica. I studenti del programma di onore si occupano di imparare al lavoro, ricerca collegiale, opportunità di leadership e attenzione globale. Prendono le classi più piccole e le passano in modo cohort dove costruiscono grandi community e relazioni con i studenti che andranno a durare durante la carriera di St. Petersburg College. Quindi, costruiscono partner di studio, gruppi di studio, cose del genere. Anche hanno relazioni di mentore con i loro facoltà. E sono molti dei facoltà che scrivono queste lettere tremendi di raccomandazione per loro andare al prossimo livello. I studenti si concentrano anche sull'eportorio online mentre sono nel programma di onore, che li aiuta a a vincere il lavoro successivo e anche la trasferimento e la ricezione di lauree. Molti i recrutatori di college ci dicono l'importanza della ricerca accademica sul curriculum di un studente. Il programma di onore ha una conferenza di ricerca ogni anno dove i nostri studenti possono presentare e poi alcuni andranno a presentare a livello regionale, nazionale e stato. La nostra conferenza più recente è stata solo qualche settimana fa dove abbiamo 45 presentanti, otto di cui sono già stati selezionati per andare alla conferenza nazionale. Il dott. Williams è stato unanimemente invitato dai nostri studenti a fare l'indirizzo chiave a nostra conferenza e ha ispirato i nostri studenti e ha mostrato a loro che vuole essere collegato al programma e l'importanza che ha per il programma. Quindi, grazie molto, dott. Williams. Voglio prendere un momento per introdurre alcuni dei recenti graduates del programma di onore e dove sono andati da qui. Tyvon Jacasol è un studente con scolarità all'università di Tampa e plans per andare in scuola medica l'anno prossimo. Azar Hamid è un studente di ingegneria all'USF. È attualmente sul scholarships del Dipartimento di Defense e è stato anche premiato da un intervento stipendiale all'USF per i suoi esperienze qui a St. Pete College. Amy Bott è la prima presidenta del consortium studenti di onore, e è attualmente al Law di FSU su una laurea di 75%. Questa è Brenna Garcia. È attualmente partecipando a Cornell University e è stato premiato da $24,000 per seguire qualsiasi tipo di ricerca che vorrebbe fare mentre è in ascolto a Cornell. E si è detto, cita, che è stato dato questa opportunità perché ha lavorato con le conferenze qui a St. Petersburg College. E poi questo ultimo giro ha il nome più bello di tutti. Il nome è in realtà Kane Magnus Magnuson. E sta attualmente partecipando a Harvard University e è stato chiesto da facoltà a coautore di articoli, di articoli giornali con loro. Quindi, questi sono alcuni dei studenti che abbiamo visto frequentemente. Nel programma di onore, anche noi vogliamo dare ai studenti molte strade per stare collegati alla comunità. Questa prima immagine è Eckerd Raising Hope. Molti di voi sono probabilmente familiari con essa. Ma è un'organizzazione che mantiene una frontiera dove i bambini in necessità possono venire e shopping per vestiti o fornizioni che avranno bisogno per l'anno scolastico. Li prendono da soli e, naturalmente, non pagano per esso. Ma abbiamo avuto un gruppo di studenti circa due mesi fa a aiutare a spedire questa organizzazione e planano di tornare. In November, abbiamo invitato due rilassati dalla comunità siriana a parlare dei loro esperienze in Siria e dei loro esperienze qui negli Stati Uniti. E attraverso questo intervento, abbiamo studenti che ora stanno volontariando a insegnare l'inglese, insegnare l'inglese a persone in questa comunità. E una buona opportunità è recentemente nata in che il principale di Largo High School sapeva che i studenti di onore stavano facendo questo insegnamento e ha invito il programma di onore a venire a Largo High School e lavorare con alcuni dei loro studenti per insegnare l'inglese anche. Quindi, prossimi passi. Abbiamo fatto una conferenza di ricerca per studenti di high school di Pinellas County. Era proprio l'ultima settimana, e avevamo più di 60 studenti da cinque o sei high schools nel paese. Eravamo in grado di mostrarne molti degli offerti qui a St. Petersburg College mentre costruisco relazioni con le high schools. Questo è stato il primo tempo che abbiamo ospitato l'evento e speriamo che sia almeno doppio in dimensione l'anno prossimo dopo le lezioni apprese e modi per pubblicare. E molti dei studenti erano molto eccitati, quindi il parola d'occhio sarà going to help us tremendously as well. Piano di mostrarci ai nostri studenti la ricerca a grandi audience. Può essere usato per la recupero. Può essere usato con la nostra relazione con le scuole di Pinellas County anche. E piano di fare più recording di quello. Stiamo lavorando con il programma di studiare all'fuori per creare opportunità di studio di onore. Stiamo sviluppando più corsi in scienza per i studenti di onore. Non sono sicuro perché, mi scuso Shannon, ma i nostri studenti di onore vogliono classi di scienza più alto. Non io, sono un scienziato politico. Invitiamo più facoltà a dare opportunità di insegnamento. I facoltà insegnano generalmente solo una classe al anno. Rotolano in e fuori. Quindi, non stiamo costruendo molte classi extra, ma stiamo assicurando che i nostri studenti siano toccati da varie opportunità. Stiamo anche rinforzando il nostro compromesso di onore e connessioni con PTK, Golden Key e altri soci di onore qui al college. Per esempio, l'anno scorso abbiamo organizzato un 5K. Abbiamo preso un po' di soldi per le lauree. E era a St. Pete, era il programma di onore, PTK e Golden Key. E piano di fare un altro evento nel futuro molto vicino. Stiamo incontrando in due settimane. Quindi, vi prenderemo in testa. Non sarà un 5K, mi scuso. Quindi, signor Presidente, non dovete essere pronti per questo.
Perfetto.
Sarà qualcosa che potrebbe essere un po' meno stressante. Ma con questo, ci sono domande?
Potete averli già detto. Quali sono i criteri per entrare nel programma di onore?
Grazie. Ci sono un paio di modi che i studenti possono essere eligibility per unione al programma di onore. Un GPA di 3.5, un 120 sui test di lettura e scrittura. Il pert è l'inizio qui al college. Anche un SAT 1200 o un ACT 26.
Capito. Altre domande? Grazie.
Hai 0.1% nativo in Hawaii e altri Pacific Islands. È una quarta di quattro.
Mi scuso, signor. Ho cambiato quella slide sotto il consiglio. Vediamo se posso. Ho messo i numeri veri. Qui è. Quindi, ho cambiato. Grazie per averlo trovato. Mi scuso.
Penso che vogliamo che il programma di onore si rispecchia il paese di Pinellas County e la comunità. E vedo che la demografia africana è di 6.2%, non quella media. E non so se abbiamo alcun obiettivo di diffusa, se abbiamo un obiettivo per aumentare.
Lo abbiamo, sì, signor. Abbiamo fatto diverse cose. Prima di tutto, negli ultimi due anni abbiamo avuto due facoltà, facoltà africane start teaching con il programma. Una al campus Gibbs, una a Clearwater. Abbiamo partecipato a eventi in centro o in metà. Anche attraverso l'intelligenza commerciale o PULSE, possiamo effettivamente ridurre ai precisi studenti che stiamo cercando di recrucare. E noi invitiamo questi studenti a diventare membri del programma di onore. Quindi, stiamo sicuramente facendo quello che possiamo e stiamo sempre cercando nuove opportunità. Grazie per questo.
Signor Presidente. Dobbiamo avere in high school, penso che ci sono programmi di onore, perché non andiamo direttamente al high school e trovare quei studenti che soddisfarebbero i requisiti minimi dai programmi di onore?
Stiamo costruendo le nostre relazioni con le high schools. In realtà, facciamo mailings. We actually do mailings to students in Pinellas County high schools. I think Alicia Vitale sends us that information, so we do reach out to those folks directly. We have several events where we go into the high schools as well, and we try to reach high schools all throughout the county, but thank you for that. Yes, sir.
Madam President, I would just tell you that recruiting African-American students is not like you can't send them mail. I think you know that. You've got to go meet them where they are, and you've got to talk to their parents. If I got a piece of mail, I'm just going to tell you from asking you to me to come and be a part of an honors program for my son, and you show no interest other than a piece of mail, he wouldn't be going there. So I'm just telling you. We've got to get a little bit, you know, I agree with Mr. Foster, sixteen students when the county is almost thirty-six percent African-American. In the city, thirty percent, and another six percent north of Almerton, six to ten percent north of Almerton. We need to get aggressive about making sure that the college looks like the rest of the community. We don't serve just one area of the community.
Yes, sir.
And if there's the benefit of having a honors program, just like, you know, I don't know if she's here, but Ms. Metz, I think she tries to make our collegiate high school as diverse as possible, and she goes out and recruits those students right in the high school that she thinks have those math scores and other scores that would allow for them to be a part of collegiate high school. It's the same kind of program, and we need to make sure it looks diverse. Thank you, Mr. Foster, for bringing that to our attention.
One of the things that we did not bring forward is would be the number of students we invited to participate. We invite more than the numbers that you see there, and they choose to come. The college takes a multi-pronged approach in engaging the high schools. Through our president's scholarships, we spend time out there focusing on these very same students to offer them a full ride to St. Petersburg College. Those who have above a three-five GPA, we are at the colleges, the campuses. We may need to go to the minority students' communities to bring that forward in that way and try a different strategy, but there is a multi-pronged approach to sharing with many of the individuals what the college provides. But I do agree, we can go into the communities and try different stats.
I agree with you, Madam President. Maybe it should be a requirement if you take a full ride and you have good enough grades to get a full ride SBC, you need to be a part of the honors program.
Thank you. We'll consider that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Francis.
Good job. Thank you. Good idea.
Next, we'll call up Dr. Cooper.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Dr. Williams, I'm here having completed the annual process for the contract review of our faculty and wanted to give you an overview of the hiring, evaluation, and contract review process so that you have a good sense that it is a very thorough process. Beginning with the hiring process, obviously, we first will review the college-wide faculty chair diversity within the academic discipline. We also make sure that we have a diverse search and screen committee that is chosen to review the applicants within a particular discipline. Those applications are then reviewed by this team, and they submit five to six names to the dean. The dean will then sift the list and ensure that the interviewees is also a diverse population of candidates. And during the process, the candidates will also provide a teaching demo, and if they will be teaching online, it will be a virtual demo so that we can ensure that they have the skills that we feel are important to join our professorial ranks. Finally, they'll be interviewed by the provost, and then they also are, the final candidates are interviewed by the president and myself. Once we bring on those new faculty members, they are provided with two years of professional development as part of a faculty cohort. They will have initial training in things like our learning management system. The department itself may provide some particular ongoing support and mentoring, particularly if they're taking on responsibilities, say, in the sciences, and they need to know about the various labs, or it could be in the arts and knowing about the various studios that they'll be using to do their teaching in. In the first year, they meet for two semesters once a month, and this is to provide them with the opportunity, visiting each of our campuses, to understand the culture of each of the communities surrounding a particular campus, also understanding our student population and their needs, introducing them to various best practices or student success strategies. And this is all run through our, of course, CEDAL or Center of Excellence for Teaching and Learning, and it's a very collaborative process. In their second year, they will continue in their faculty cohort, and they'll take on a particular project that is in need of being addressed. So some of the things that our previous second-year cohort have done have been things like identifying high practice, high-impact practices for teaching, the essential elements of a successful syllabus, the SACS standard writing and review process, revitalization of our CEDAL, a new faculty cohort online course. That's what's being worked on currently. And then, excuse me, that was last year. This year, they're looking at developing a faculty learning community model. So it's a very thorough process of professional development for our new faculty. Information associated with the faculty annual evaluation is stored. All the documents and data are stored in what we call the Faculty One-eighty or an e-portfolio system or tool. All faculty are evaluated annually, even if they're on continuing contract, and those evaluations involve several different types of information. This will include data associated with the success of the students in their courses, and that can depend upon the particular contract as well as how many supplemental courses, as to how many pieces of data we have. There's also the student survey of the instruction and the students' feedback. Then they can store information about their instructional strategies that they use, information about what type of engagement or what types of assessments they're using, also information about their syllabi, enrollment, anything in regards to their class observation. This could be done by a peer if they're on continuing contract or by the dean if they so chose. If they're on annual contract, that is done by the dean. Then they can also provide information about what they've done in regards to their professional development, as well as what they're planning to do, any contributions outside of the classroom to the college by participating on various committees or initiatives, and then anything about scholarly publications or contributions that they've made to professional organizations or societies outside the college. We currently have three-hundred-and-sixty-six full-time faculty. Two-hundred-and-eighty-seven of those faculty are currently on continuing contract. This year, we reviewed sixty-nine for annual contract renewal, and we reviewed ten for the continuing contract renewal. Faculty obviously play a role in this contract review process. We ask them to take some time to review their data as well as their student survey of instruction and reflect on what they believe it's telling them, look at things that they may want to do in the future in regards to professional development, if they want to make changes or adjustments. On the student survey of instruction, it's on a seven-point Likert scale. Most scores for our full-time faculty run in the six to seven, so it is skewed very high. And the three areas that this particular survey looks at are faculty engagement, preparation and organization, and course instruction. And those individual rates are not only given to the faculty member, but they can also compare themselves to others who teach the same course within the department. I know there is some talk that the questions may be, in some respects, not aligned with the learning experience that Dr. Ulrich was sharing with you, so we may come forward with some recommendations to adjust some of those questions in the not-too-distant future. We also ask faculty to share what they're doing to support students outside the classroom, and then, again, their service outside of the classroom, other committees that they might participate in, and then their professional development that they've completed and what they're planning to do in the coming year. This information is, of course, then reviewed by their dean, and the dean adds their comments and observations, and then that their contract recommendation, the dean's contract recommendation, is, of course, brought forward to the president and myself with any supporting documentation. And then the deans will return and provide feedback to the faculty members. As I said, this year, we reviewed sixty-nine for annual contract. We are holding two of those decisions until May, and then we had one non-renew and one retirement. In the ten that were reviewed for continuing contract, we are recommending nine for continuing contract and one to remain on annual for another year. Any questions?
Go ahead.
Before you go, if you don't mind, I'd like to get a copy of what the evaluation looked like from the student side. To answer that question, you know, I've been a constant, not necessarily, but a constant calling on me about commendations by professors and classmates, and I would like to see what the evaluation looks like to the students. They have to have a combination, the mayor, if it's not on, they would like me to put it on there to see if their commendations are being met in that class, because after the class is over, it is too late. After the student has taken the exam and the grades are posted and not happy, then it's a little bit too late for you to call the lead or the president or anybody else. So I'd like to see the evaluation and see what the student has done. The other thing is, I want to see the questions. I mean, you have these soft hard questions. Ask the students, you know, do they think that their professor was great? One, you know, hey, one, two, three, four, five, they were horrible or another, horrible. Because it looks like, you know, the evaluations are, you know, seem like they're just giving the people and expect them to get it back, and most of the time, these students are like on their way out the door, and they don't care. The good students don't care because they've already made their grade, but the students that are really in jeopardy, you know, we like, I'd like to see an evaluation that really gives them an opportunity to get honors feedback. And I think they're just an afterthought, right? You know, we've got to do this, so here, do it. And I'd like, you know, I'd like to see what they say and see how we ask the students questions, or do we even have the data? Or do you have any data from what the students say from last year?
Oh, yes.
So I'd like to see some of that data as well, because I think this is the most critical thing that we do as a board. We evaluate from the outside, but at the same time, I don't, I mean, I can tell you what these, how these professors are doing, and if I guarantee, if I talked to about fifty percent of students, we'd be all over the board. Some would say this professor is great, some would say they're horrible, and some would be like right in the middle. So I mean, I'd like to see what the questions are and what we ask the students to put down, because I know on my evaluation, when I was in college, you know, it was like, you know, bubble, bubble, and then at the bottom, do you have anything else? And I was like, well, I don't, I don't think this person does that at all. So, I mean, I'd like to see that. The other thing is, who evaluates deans? Are you the only person that evaluates deans? Is a faculty?
Actually, we do a program administrator evaluation and all of the dean's direct reports, including the faculty.
Are the deans faculty?
No.
They're not?
No.
Okay. But they disevaluate all of the faculty, right?
The deans evaluate our full-time faculty. The chairs or program directors evaluate our adjuncts.
Okay. So the reason I ask that question is because in my line of work, if my department is not doing well, guess who gets blamed?
You do.
Me, right? The buck stops with me in my place. So I want to know if the buck stops with them, and if down the line, I get nothing but complaints and problems, and students aren't doing well, you know, what happens to the dean? Do they continue to just keep their job? Because see, here's the problem. I see, I think I see, I'm just a little bit frustrated today, because I see a lot, and I was waiting on this before, I wanted to hear you share, saying, I want to do it with evaluating the president and the dean, and I don't mean the board. I want evaluations that would give honors feedback and that we can evaluate folks based upon the job they do. Because guess what? The only thing that we have to do, the government got on my back this week, the only thing that we're responsible for to do at this college is produce a good product for the workforce. And if we're not doing that, and if students aren't making it through, if thirty, less than thirty percent are making it through community colleges, then it's something that we need to be going back. And we've got to do that. So I want to know what the evaluation process is from the buck down.
Okay. So, Trustee Gibbons, we'll bring that information back to you. I believe the first thing you asked for was you wanted to see the actual questions that students are answering when they are surveying their instructor. I think that was the first.
Yeah. I want to see the evaluation that the students get for the instructor. I want to see if there's any other evaluation that the instructor gets beyond just the student and then how that process works. And then beyond that, if the deans are evaluating, I want to see that, because that's the whole, that's the whole one. That's right down to the bottom.
Right. So we'll bring back at the March or April Board, the evaluation process for the college. So you'll have that information on who gets evaluated and how.
Pick one. You don't have to pick all of them. Pick one. And don't pick them out. You don't have to.
That's not, that's not what I was saying. I'm trying to make sure that you and the board have a good understanding of how the evaluation process works. We're not bringing anyone's personal evaluation forward. We're bringing the process. I think you were questioning what were the students being able to survey the faculty on. I think that was the first, and you want to see the actual questions. I think the second thing you asked was, how are the deans evaluated, and are they evaluated by faculty or the people who report to them, and are they evaluated by Dr. Cooper? I think you want to see the evaluation process.
Exactly.
So that's what we'll bring back.
And if we can get the evaluation questions that go to the students before the meeting, just so we can look it over, review, and then maybe have comments as to what we can add.
That would be easy.
I had one question going back to the student evaluations. Is it a requirement for the students to fill that out, or if not, what percentage of students actually fill out the evaluation form?
It's not a requirement, but we have focused on the rate of the response rate of students, and our faculty probably range, it's quite high, if I remember correctly. I think we're in the sixty percent overall response rate, which is a very good response rate, because we've encouraged our faculty in that regard. But I want to check and make sure, and I can give you the range as well. But it has been constantly improving.
Great.
I have one other follow-up question. As part of the accreditation that was completed last year, the one comment and recommendation dealt with some of the faculty, very limited amount of faculty, correct, in the programs and the credentialing?
It was in regards to the credentialing, correct.
Does that play in to the evaluation, or this is completely independent?
The credentialing of the faculty member would happen at the very front, and so if they didn't meet the credentialing requirements, we, of course, would then.
It would be reflected in whether their contract was renewed or not?
No, we wouldn't even hire them.
Okay.
Right. In this case, it was an adjunct situation, and so we would invite them back.
They would either need to be, yes.
And they were informed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gibbons.
We have one more question.
Sure.
Yeah. Can we look at their Rate My Professor?
That's not ongoing policy, but I have encouraged the deans to sometimes look at that, to see what's out there as well as what's in-house.
Because that's where you, I mean, if you want to be, students are really saying.
No, I wasn't doing students. They stopped.
But that's not saying they're on.
That's when you want to know where your professor is.
Right. Also encourage faculty to look at that. Now, the thing with Rate My Professor is anybody can post there. They don't have to necessarily be that faculty member's student.
Exactly.
So you have to be careful how you use that information.
You've got to take it with a grain of salt, just how we don't really read Yelp with our business.
And with Rate My Professor and things like that, folks are either one of two things. They're either very happy, or they're very angry. I think that you have to be careful in looking at Rate My Professor.
I don't know that I think it should be the be-all, be-all, end-all.
Right.
But I think if you're talking about wanting to see what the student, we're limiting their answers on our survey. We're not limited.
We're not. We're not. We're not. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cooper.
Good job.
So with that, we have an action item concerning faculty annual contract and continuing contract recommendations, as we just heard. Do I have a motion for approval?
With approval.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. We'll invite up Mr. Brian Miles and Ms. Jeanette Hunt for our budget report.
Good morning, Mr. Chair.
Morning.
Board trustees, Dr. Williams.
Good morning.
This morning, I'm going to present four components to this presentation. First, we'll look at our monthly budget report, then we'll look at some year-to-date budget highlights, and also give you some projections on where we believe we'll end at the end of this fiscal year, and then the timeline of our budget planning for next fiscal year. So first, looking at our revenue at the end of January 31st, we've come in at about fifty-one point seven million dollars, which is about eighty-five percent of our budget. Last week, when we looked at our enrollment, we were point eight percent higher than what we projected for spring, and so that difference is about two-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand dollars. Next, our state appropriation at thirty-three point two million. We will see our first lottery payment this month, so you'll begin to see that on the next month's reports. And then overall, for revenue, we're just a little bit shy of ninety million dollars, that's sixty-two percent of our budget. Next, looking at our expenditures, our personnel and benefits, sixty-four point three million, we're about fifty-eight percent through the fiscal year, you see our percentage here as about fifty-seven percent. And our current expense and our capital, we are continuing to trend where we're spending less than the prior fiscal year, for a total operating expense of eighty point three million So now I wanted to mention a few highlights that we had currently going on in this fiscal year. The first chart, the black represents our budget for our tuition, which is fifty point eight million. As I mentioned, we have been, as a reminder, I'll tell you that for fall, we were point six percent higher than our projected budget, for spring, a point eight percent, and then this also assumes that we'll be flat for the summer enrollment. Earlier, you saw a presentation by Shannon Ulrich for our FGO representative, and she mentioned successes. One of the successes was the modified drop-add dates. This is a reflection, we believe, of that modification. We see here that the blue line represents our revenue for tuition in December and January of last fiscal year, and then the orange represents our current year tuition revenue, and you see that the spring enrollment, that revenue over each month, for the first time this year, we actually collected more tuition revenue than the prior fiscal year. Next, we'll look at our expense reduction from the prior fiscal year. This is just to compare, that we're continuing to be intentional with our spending, and we're spending less than we did in the prior fiscal year. You see here, currently, we spent sixty-four point three million in our personnel, and last year, we spent sixty-six point one million, with a one-point-eight million dollar reduction. Next, same with our current expense, we've spent fourteen point six, and last year, we spent fifteen point eight, with almost a one-point-one million dollars reduction. So now we want to go further and look at where we think we would end the fiscal year. This is based on what we assume will happen for the rest through to June 30th. So we're looking at our revenue, we feel we'll come in at about a hundred-and-thirty-seven point eight million dollars. You see here that that's about eight-hundred thousand dollars less than what we budgeted. We just heard, we know that right now, tuition is up about two-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand. We also know with our state appropriation, we'll receive what the appropriation, so this amount is contributed to some of our other revenues, like indirect costs, interest and dividends, and things like, and some of our other student fees. Our fund transfers in, we're expecting to use about the same amount, which is the three point seven million dollars. This is coming from our auxiliary fund. And then, I'm very excited to report, based on the information that we have now, we know that our reserve line, we budgeted one-point-eight million dollars to use, we're estimating a little over half a million dollars, so that is a very, very good thing. Following suit with our expenses, right now, we're trending about eight-hundred-and-fifty-three thousand dollars less than our budget, for current expense, about nine-hundred-and-fifty-two, and then our capital, two-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand, for a balanced budget. So next, our timeline for our fiscal year eighteen, nineteen budget. In January, we came back to you with our confirmation of our college commitments, academic excellence, economic mobility, and for community engagement. And then we know that the legislative session began on January 9th. In February, we, we're presenting now the year-end projections, and also, we plan to have our enrollment projections by the end of this month. In March, we know that the legislative session ends on March 9th. Also, behind the scenes, we'll be working with executive leadership and department heads to build a budget based on our college commitments, and also aligning them to some of our continuing strategic initiatives that we have. For April, we'll come to you with a presentation on our budget highlights for eighteen, nineteen, what parameters were included to build that budget, and also, we'll come to you with a draft strategic plan. In May, we plan to bring to you a proposed budget, if there's no special session, and also, if we, there's no other unforeseen activities that happen that month, we'll be asking for approval. In June, if there's any follow-up, we'll come back to you with a follow-up, and we'll submit our budget by the end of the June 30th. Are there any questions? Well, this concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. We'll move to administrative matters, there's one action item to approve the personnel report, which is in your binder there. Do I have a motion of, for approval?
For approval.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. That brings us to the consent agenda. We already discussed item four, which was the lease agreement at the Seminole campus. I'd like to take the rest of these items for approval, all at the same time, unless there's any discussion regarding any of these items. If not, do I have a motion?
We have approval, if they can second.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. We have no informational reports today, and that brings us to the president's report.
All right, thank you so much. There's, there's two bills in Tallahassee that we're following. One is Senate Bill 540, which you all have been made perfectly aware of what that's all about and entail, many of you have weighed in on that. I think that's also something Trustee Gibbons has been working on while he's been up in Tallahassee as well. But there's another one that snuck in on us when we were there, the Leadership SPC Team got a chance to sit in on that, and that's House Bill 909, the Free Expression on Campus Bill, that is proposing to allow freedom of speech on campuses without campuses being able to respond to comments that may be made by those who are on-site. It also changes the requirement of us having a place and space for people to come on campus and exercise free speech, and it also proposes a fine to the institution if the faculty, staff, or students respond negatively to the person who's, who's making the claims, whatever they're there to do. And so, for community colleges being an open facility, we could have a hundred people on campus on one day, practicing free speech, where our staff and students cannot practice their free speech, or respond. And so I have a folder for the board to provide that to you, and to let you know, I may be going up to Tallahassee to speak in front of the committee in opposition of House Bill, I think it's 909, so I'll give you a copy of that. The other is, there's a few things I'd like the board to put on your calendar. One is graduation is May 12th, at nine o'clock at Tropicana, and I really, really need you guys there. I think the faculty and staff and students would love to have the board there. Our December graduation, we had Chair Foster for the first session, and that was it, we had no one for the second, so it would be nice for the board to be there. ACCT is an annual event that happens for board trustee, board of trustee members, it's October 24th through the 27th. It would be great if our board members could attend that. And the last one is the National Legislative Summit, which will be February 10th through the 13th, 2019, in Washington, DC. Deborah Boyle represented the college this past week, and we, we did not have any of our board members there, and a lot of folks were there with their board. So hopefully, next year, you guys will be able to join me. I was in another meeting and couldn't get out to go, but it would be great if you guys could go, and I'll just give you copies.
Madam President, ma'am.
Yes.
To the board members, I have attended each and every one of these for a lot of years, and I'm just telling you, it's a good thing to, to go to these conferences, because you get to hear what other colleges are doing across the country, and bring those ideas back. Some of them are good, some of them we are far exceeded, but you, you don't have a measuring stick without being involved in these things. The legislative conference is especially a good one, because you get to go up and talk to your congressional people, you can see what bills at the federal level are impacting us at the local level, so when we talk about our funding, funding sources, and how budgets are put together at colleges across the country, you can see, some of these boards are elected, the folks that sit in your seat are elected, and not all of them are appointed by governors, some of them, they're, they're all different ways, some of them, the mayor of their town gets to put them there. So I think you would have a good cross-section of, of individuals that you can get to know and meet, and that would can help get better understanding of college boards, but I would entreat you all to, to try to attend some of these things.
Could we, could we get a priority list that goes a year out?
Absolutely.
Of things that are most critical to attend, you know, and kind of rank them all the way down, just so we can have on our calendars, with plenty of time, these things that are important, that we need to be at.
Absolutely.
That'll, that'll help keep me accountable.
And along those lines, not only the priority list, but maybe collectively, a sign-up list, or some way that we know who is going to what, because we may presume somebody else is going, and we don't need to go, or vice versa, so we can make an intentional, okay, you're doing this, we can take a few minutes at the end of a meeting to do that.
Perfect.
I think that's, that's a great idea. In your packet, you also have the 2018 Community College Federal Legislative Priorities, so you'll know what's on the federal level. And then, on Monday, I'll be, along with some fellow colleagues with Bridges Tobacco Laureates, we'll be receiving a check from Congressman Charlie Chris, we'll be down here at the Midtown Campus for the consortium with HCC State College of Florida, and what we're doing with the Bridges Tobacco Laureates, so I'm real proud of, of that, and I believe that is my report.
Thank you, Madam President. With that, we will meet, yes, sir.
I didn't know if it was properly taken up on the HR report, but, Madam President, we also, I got a couple of requests from employees, and I wanted to bring to your attention, that we don't have a bereavement policy, that people have to take their personal time if something happens to their family. Is there anywhere we could get, I looked through the hand organaries, I wanted to go and get something to show how the bereavement is done within the college, not look at doing a bereavement policy.
Okay, we'll, we'll bring something back to share how we handle that.
Next meeting is March 20th, at the EpiCenter. Thank you all for being here today, and with that, we'll adjourn.